Good evening, everyone. This is Mintai, Executive Director for the City of Santa Ana Planning and Building Department. Because we're hosting an online virtual environment meeting today, I will be helping the Chair with some of the moderation of this meeting. At this point, Mr. Chair, if you can call the meeting to order, please?
Madam Secretary, do we have a roll call of the attendees?
Yes, I'll do a roll call now. Commissioner, I'm sorry, we'll start with yourself, Commissioner Chair. Commissioner Iker Contras Leo. Commissioner Rivera.
Here.
Commissioner Fan.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Here.
Commissioner Khan.
Here.
So, we have everyone here at this time except for Commissioner Cynthia Contras Leo. At this point, I'd like to call for the Pledge of Allegiance. We have the flag here behind me, and I will start.
Okay.
Ready, please begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. One nation, united in its own accord.
Roll. Okay, thank you.
So, at this point, I would like to go over the meeting protocols. For the public hearing, so everyone would know what to expect. Staff will provide an oral report and answer questions from the Commission. The public hearing will be open. The applicant then will make a presentation, limited to fifteen minutes. Members of the public will then be called to speak. Individual will be limited to three minutes. Designated speaker can be limited to ten minutes. The applicant will be given opportunity to respond to comments made by the audience. That is, it's going to be limited to five minutes. At that point in time, the public will be closed, and there will be discussion by the Commission with action taken to approve, conditionally approve, deny, or continue the review of the application. Please consider the following when organizing your comments. Please state your name and address. State whether you support, oppose, or are neutral to the proposal. Your statement should include all facts with your knowledge. Avoid any gossip, emotion, reputation. A clear and concise, non-repetitive argument is most effective. We shall now proceed to public comment. Does any public member have any comments at this point? Madam Secretary, do we have anyone called in or logged in online for public comments?
We show one person called in, but they have not indicated that they would like to speak or comment on an agenda item.
But are the public comments, Min, are the ones that are not related to the agenda tonight?
Thank you, Chair, for reminding me. So, it's public for anyone who wants to speak on any items or any matters that's not on the agenda for tonight.
Correct.
Yes, and we do not have any indication of a call.
So, public comments is closed?
Thank you. We now move on to consent calendar. At this time, the Commission will consider consent calendar items. This includes any excused absences. Madam Secretary?
Yes, so right now, we only have Commissioner Contras Leo absent. So, we have you.
Do I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Leo Contras? So, I have a motion by Commissioner Rivera. Is there a second?
I'll second. I think it was Ken that made the motion.
Let me clarify that. The motion was made by Commissioner Nguyen and a second by Commissioner Rivera. All in favor, let's do a roll call.
Aye.
Sir, if you can do a roll call.
I'll go ahead and take mute yours.
I will do a roll call.
If you can just mute it, Min. Mute.
Oh.
Sorry, we're having feedback.
It's from your computer. Let me do the roll call. Chair McLaughlin?
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera?
Aye.
Commissioner Fan?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Aye.
Commissioner Khan?
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved unanimously of the members that are present?
Did, Min, did we consider just the absence, or did we consider the minutes of the meeting from the last meeting?
Just the absence. And now, we're moving on to the minutes?
No minutes.
No minutes. No minutes.
Okay.
So, next, we're moving on to the business calendar. Do we have any business calendar item, Madam?
Yes, I'm your public hearing on my next page.
Thank you. So, the first item we have on the agenda is Conditional Use Permit 2020-40. This is for the property located 720 East Seventeenth Street, located on the Arterio Commercial Zoning District. The request is for approval of a CUP to renew the entitlement of an existing fifty-five-foot major wireless communication facility disguised as a monopine. Staff is requesting that the public hearing regarding this matter be continued to a special meeting scheduled for March thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Madam Secretary, do we, at this point, is it appropriate for the Planning Commission to comment, or do we ask for public?
We do not have anyone who has indicated this.
We do not have anyone that has indicated they would like to speak on this matter.
So, we have no public comments on this matter. Mr. Chair, at this point, I will put the item back to you. Do you have any questions for staff for discussion?
No, but can we take the motion to, at this point in time, can we make a motion to continue?
Yes. Who is motioning for the continuance?
I would like to make a motion for continuing to April sixth instead of a special meeting on March thirtieth.
So, that's a motion to continue the public hearing for this matter to March thirtieth, two thousand twenty? Do I have a second?
No, April. Is it March twentieth, or is it April sixth?
April sixth.
No, April sixth, April sixth.
March thirtieth.
Ken is making a motion to April sixth, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, Min, Ken is making a motion for April sixth.
April sixth. Are we that asked? Okay, do we have a second on that matter?
I'll second it.
May I ask a question for clarification? So, based on the current staff recommendation, as well as the adjournment of the proposed meeting date, we're looking at the following Monday, which is March thirtieth, to conduct the next public hearing. Is that still the wish of the Planning Commission to move forward with the April seventh recommendation?
May I expect, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Okay. The reason why I'm recommending April sixth, because why we're conducting a special meeting for one single matter. We can just move to regular Planning Commission meeting as scheduled in April.
I just had a clarification. I believe for all of the agenda items, excuse me, sorry, Chair. I believe for all the agenda items, it's being recommended to March thirtieth, right?
Yes, for a special meeting.
That is correct.
Because our next, our next regular meeting is...
It's not till April thirteenth.
April, okay. Thanks for the clarification.
And that came, Mr. Chairman, could I modify my motion, please?
Go ahead.
To move this item to March thirtieth, a special action.
Okay. Then I'll second it again.
So, I have a motion by Commissioner Nguyen. I have a second by Chair McLaughlin to continue this matter recommended by staff to March thirtieth. Roll call, please. Let me do a roll call at this point. Chair McLaughlin?
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera?
Aye.
Commissioner Fan?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Aye.
Commissioner Khan?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. Next item on the agenda, Conditional Use Permit 2019-42. This is for the property located 1302 South Lion Street, located in the Light Industrial M1 Zoning District. This is a request for approval of Conditional Use Permit to renew the entitlement of existing fifty-five-foot tall wireless communication facility disguised as a monopine. Staff's recommendation on this matter is to continue the public hearing to March thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Madam Secretary, do we have any comments from the public on this matter?
We have written correspondence, and we have a few callers, attendees. If there was anyone that would like to comment, please indicate your desire to do so.
I'm sorry, that was echoing back.
No one has indicated a desire to speak on this matter.
Okay, so we have no public comments, speaker requests on this matter. Mr. Chair and Planning Commission, do I have a motion to continue this item as recommended?
I'll make the motion to continue the item as recommended.
I'm second. I'm second.
I have Commissioner Felix as a motion, and I have a second from Commissioner Nguyen to continue this item to February twenty, I'm sorry, to continue this item to March thirtieth, two thousand twenty. I will do a roll call for the votes. Chair McLaughlin?
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera?
Aye.
Commissioner Fan?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Aye.
Commissioner Khan?
Aye.
And we have unanimous vote for continuance. Item number three is a public hearing regarding Conditional Use Permit numbers 2020-04, 2020-05 for the property located 1406 East First Street, located in the General Commercial Zoning District. The applicant is requesting for approval of land use entitlements for a new fast food Jack-in-the-Box restaurant, a Conditional Use Permit to allow the drive-through window service, and also to allow the restaurant to operate twenty-four hours per day. Staff's recommendation on this is to continue the matter to a special meeting for March thirtieth, two thousand twenty twenty. Madam Secretary, do we have any comments on this matter?
No written comments received. We have a few attendees in the queue. If anyone would like to speak on this item, please indicate your desire to do so now.
Do we have any requests?
No, we have no requests.
Chair McLaughlin, at this point in time, we have no public comments requested. What's the pleasure of the Commission?
To continue it to the thirtieth. So, do we have a motion to continue it?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to continue it.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Felix Rivera and a second from Commissioner Fan to continue this item. I will continue with roll call. Commissioner McLaughlin?
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera?
Aye.
Commissioner Fan?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Aye.
Commissioner Khan?
Aye.
We have a six-zero to continue the item. Moving on to item number four, this is a Conditional Use Permit number 2020-04, 2020-05 for the property located at 305 East Fourth Street. The applicant is requesting approval of, for an existing nonprofit theater, the Frida Cinema, a Conditional Use Permit to allow a Type sixty-four for special on-sale general for a nonprofit theater company, alcoholic beverage control license to sell beer and wine, as well as distilled spirits on-premise consumption, and a Conditional Use Permit to allow after-hours operation until 2:00 a.m. seven days a week. Staff's recommendation on this matter is to continue the public hearing on this item to March thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Madam Secretary, do we have any written comments?
Yes, there was one written comment received, and that was distributed to the Commission, and that comment will be carried over to the March thirtieth meeting as well.
Thank you. Do we have any public requests to speak on this matter?
If there is anyone from the public that's in the queue now that would like to speak, please indicate your desire to do so now.
We don't have anyone, Mr. Chair. Do I have a motion for continue this item?
Are we going to be able to really continue this one practically speaking from now until next Monday, or is this something we might put off for another, the next meeting, the next regularly scheduled meeting?
Right now, staff's recommendation is to continue this matter to March thirtieth.
Okay, I'm just going to throw this out for discussion with the rest of the Commission. Does anybody have any comments that they would like to make on this item?
None.
Okay. Then do we have a motion to go ahead and reschedule for the thirtieth of March?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to reschedule for March.
I'll second. That's Fan.
Okay.
So, I have a motion for continuing this public hearing on this matter to March thirtieth, two thousand twenty, by Commissioner Rivera, second by Commissioner Fan. I'll go ahead and do a roll call for the vote. Chair McLaughlin?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera?
Aye.
Commissioner Fan?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Aye.
Commissioner Khan?
Aye.
And I have unanimous vote for continuance. Moving on on the agenda to public hearing number five, this is General Plan Amendment twenty twenty dash zero one and Zoning Ordinance Amendment twenty twenty dash zero two. This is a request for the property located 11019 North Broadway, also known as the One Broadway Plaza Specific Development, S.D. number seventy-five zoning district. The applicant is requesting approval of the following land use entitlement for the One Broadway Plaza project. Number one, General Plan Amendment number twenty twenty dash zero one, to allow residential uses within the One Broadway Plaza District Center, General Plan Land Use Designation. And two, the Zoning Ordinance Amendment, number twenty twenty dash zero two, to allow amendment to the S.D. seventy-five zoning district, allowing for residential uses within entitled, entitled office building, as well as to adopt a residential development standard for the project. Madam Secretary, staff's recommendation on this matter is also to continue the public hearing regarding this matter to March thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Madam Secretary, do we have any written comments on this matter?
Excuse me? Yes, three written comments were received and were distributed to the Commission, and those comments will be carried forward to the March thirtieth meeting as well.
Thank you. At this point in time, do we have any member of the public that is participating online wanting to make any comments?
Hey, one question.
Before, I'm sorry, before that happens...
Fan, Ty, Ty, sorry. Go ahead, because I think you have something that you need to say at this time.
Yes, yes, Commissioner, before we move forward, Chair, because I work at the law firm Ratan and Tucker, which represents Caribou Industries, that is the developer in this project, I must recuse myself out of an abundance of caution, and so I will leave the room by turning off the camera and will return once this project, or the motion, or however this works is done. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Min.
Madam Secretary, at this time, do we have any member of the public online that would like to speak?
Oh, yes, you.
Yes, we have one speaker.
Alexandria. Alexandra would like to speak.
I have a speaker named Alexandria would like to speak at this point. We will put Alexandria online. If you can hold on for one second, we're having connection difficulty.
This one, oh, this person would like to speak, it's not allowed to talk.
Okay. So, we have allowed to talk, but this one is the person that would like to speak. Look, the hand's raised.
I see.
But I cannot...
They can hear you, so just stand by, please.
Stand by, please.
Okay, is it working now?
Alexandria?
Sorry, Sarah, this is actually a mania scamia. Alexandria is the name of my computer.
Okay.
All right, so we have a speaker. If you can please announce your name and address for the record, and if you, anytime you're ready to speak item, please begin.
Oh, unmuted. Oh, thank you. Sorry, yeah, this is Min, seventeen oh nine West Thailand Street in Santa Ana. I just wanted to thank you all for doing this online, just trying to test out some... Oh. Anything? No?
Yeah, we can hear you, Minnie.
Okay, yeah, I just get randomly muted every so often. So, just trying to test out the technology and trying to make sure that it works. But I do, on this item, hope that the Commission does a full study, or just at least presentation to the public, so I know that we're not really able to view the agenda items, and I know this will be a big one for folks to learn a little bit more about. So, anything that can be made available to the public as early as possible would be greatly appreciated.
So, we are, will be releasing the agenda on this item as of tonight? Yes, as of to, after this meeting tonight, we will be publishing the agenda for the March thirtieth meeting with the full staff report online, which will be available for the public to review.
So, it'll be available as of midnight tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Minnie, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. So, yeah, thank you. That's really appreciated, and again, I hope everyone's staying safe and, yeah, just enjoying the convalescence as best as we can.
Thank you. And the public, normally, we don't generally interact, but unfortunately, since we're doing this virtually online, want to make sure the public participation is maximized, so therefore, we will publish the item and all of the agenda items for the next hearing online tonight.
All right, cool. Well, thank you for your time.
Madam Secretary, do we have anyone else that would like to speak on this matter?
I don't have anyone else who has indicated that they'd like to speak. If you'd like to speak, please do raise your hand, and I will connect you in. We'll do one more call for speakers.
So, I received a message from Mr. Mike Tardif that he wanted to do a comment, but he needed guidance as to how to do that, how to make a public comment.
I don't see Mike Tardif name coming up on the attendees list. There are about eight attendees, and I have no one else who has indicated they'd like to speak on this item. Okay.
Sarah, do we have a list of the attendees at this point in time?
Yes, I do have a list.
Okay. So, that will be part of the minutes of the meeting?
I believe so, that this list should, there should be a record of it, but people are going, coming on and leaving the meeting. Someone just left the meeting, I didn't catch the name. And also, it's not always the full name. Someone has just a phone number, a first name.
Gotcha.
So, we do keep record of the public comments that were made.
Okay. Fine, fair enough.
So, at this point in time, is there anyone else that would like to speak on this matter? For those member of the public that is having trouble with getting online, like Mr. Tardif, you will have an opportunity to submit your comments in written via email, or you can mail it to the city before the next meeting of March thirtieth, or staff will be happy to meet with anyone that would like to discuss this matter. So, with that, do we have one last call for any online comments? Having none, do I have a motion to continue the public hearing this matter to March thirtieth, two thousand twenty?
I'd like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion to move this matter to a special meeting scheduled on March thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Nguyen and a second from Commissioner Garcia. At this time, I would like to have roll call. Chair McLaughlin?
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera?
Aye.
Commissioner Fan?
She's abstained.
I'm sorry, that's right. Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Aye.
Commissioner Khan?
Aye.
We have a vote of five to one to zero with abstention from Commissioner Fan. At this point, we have come to the end of the business calendar. We're moving on to comment from staff. I do have some comments from staff at this point in time for the purpose of testing out the technology and our ability to present information. Staff will be providing the Commission with a presentation from a previously approved project. I want to let the Planning Commission know that this item has already been previously approved, and we're presenting this purely as informational and also for the purpose of testing technology on presentation. We have Ali Pusgeskabor, our senior planner, who will be presenting this item. Ali?
Thank you, Min, for meeting Chairman McLaughlin, and thank you, members of the Planning Commission, who are going to take a moment now to share this.
Is there a problem with the volume? His microphone is on mute, I believe.
Okay, great.
Can everyone hear me better now?
Yes.
Thank you.
Before you, Ali, before you begin, can we just clarify one thing? Ty Fan had excused herself based on her abstaining. How do we get her back on?
Back.
Sorry?
I thought I just saw her, she's back.
She's back, okay. Good enough, thank you.
Yes, I'm here, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ty.
Thank you, Chairman, and good evening, members of the Planning Commission. As Min stated earlier, this is a previously approved project from April twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen. We're doing a test run to ensure that everyone can hear and see the presentation accurately. So, this was for South Coast Lincoln at fourteen oh five South Autumall Drive. It was site plan review number two thousand and seventeen dash one. There was a project description and a site aerial showing the site. There was a site plan prepared and a site photo. This was a rendering of the project, which ultimately, the final project resembles this image. And the analysis showed that the project would be consistent with the vision of the Autumall specifically.
I guess somebody didn't like your presentation, Ali.
Someone really doesn't like leaving vehicles. But in any case, all barking aside, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have or get feedback on the visual and audio quality.
Thank you, Ali. At this point in time, my task position, be able to view the presentation and receive the audio presentation. the presentation and see the audio presentation quality. This is, we'll welcome Chair McLachlan.
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera?
Aye.
Commissioner Fan?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Aye.
Commissioner Kano?
Aye.
Great, so it appears that our technology is working wherever we see presentation, at this time, staff does not have any additional comments, at this time, we will have additional comments, I will start with Chair McLachlan, do you have any comments?
I, I think we, I think we should kind of get together tomorrow to recap some of the things that came out of the presentation, and how things operated, and what we can do to make sure that we can minimize a lot of this by the end of the week, so that we can do the next meeting, which would be a full-blown meeting, in a manner in which we should be running it today.
Thank you, we will be sure to do that with you, Chair, for the, for the rest of the commission, if you have any comments, you can do it to me now, or you can do it separately, in terms of your meeting facility, and technology, or any feedback you have to help us better run this process, and we appreciate it, and we will, we staff, we can hear and determine, and also, with you, Chair, as soon as we have the information.
Okay.
Next, we will have Commissioner Rivera, any comments?
I think Felix, Felix, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. No comments.
No comments, thank you, Commissioner Fan, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I'm not, obviously, we're, this is the first time, so this is great, very interesting experience, but if next time, I guess I don't know when we have our Zoom up, but maybe half an hour beforehand, or something like that, so that people can kind of queue up and just be in line and waiting, just as they would in council chambers, I think that would be really helpful for residents, in case they, you know, want to be able to speak, and it's a little bit easier, and, and we can still show up at 5:15 or whatever, but if we get it up at least a half an hour with the Zoom meeting, people can wait and be ready by their computer.
Great comments, that, that's very good, thank you. Commissioner Garcia?
I just want to thank you guys for facilitating this through the Zoom conference, I think that's very, very useful and helpful, and stay safe, everybody, that's also, thank you so much for your time, I think some of you guys are actually in council chambers, and hopefully staying away from each other, at least six feet away from each other, and no hugs, no, no, even, be close to each other, please.
We are, we are, thank you.
Okay, good.
Commissioner Nguyen?
I would like to compliment staff for, you know, able to get this virtual meeting well, you know, in very short time, you can able to get all the data, information together, and able to set this stuff, and I would also, I would like to make sure that this meeting, virtual meeting is, will be recorded and documented, and when the last thing that's possible, when the public or the application, applicant make the presentation, possibly can see the videos or something, or, or this, or this audio, is that possible?
Understood, and that capability is available for the applicant to be able to present at the next meeting, we will make that available, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kano?
Yeah, in regards to public comments, would there be kind of like a small, maybe one-minute tutorial online that's maybe somebody made, for them to know how to make the comments, I know some people are having a hard time using Zoom, so that might be a little bit more helpful to them.
We will put all the information online, ready for the next meeting, in terms of tutorial, based on our experience with the meeting tonight, we've learned a lot, we learned quite a bit, both in terms of technology and the logistics, so we will make sure that that occur for the next meeting.
Thank you.
I think one of the comments I'd like to build on Angie's comment is, maybe an option, if we can do it, is that somebody can call in and leave a message with regards to their comments, and somehow we transcribe that before the meeting.
We will offer, and as with all meetings, both past and current and the future, any member of the public who is not able to participate either online, or be present at locations in the past when we held meeting in physical location, they can email any comments to our Planning Commission Secretary, or they can send their comments via United Postal Service prior to the meeting, and we will deliver the comments to you as we have done in the past, so that will continue to be available to the public, and thank you, Commissioner and Chair, for bringing that up, because I do want to let the public know that, you know, this virtual meeting format is new for the city, new for the public, and therefore, we will make every effort to get your comments in, written comments, at the latest possible moment, and that will include monitoring our email, but we ask that you submit any comments to the commission prior to the meeting, which starts at 5:30, for the public participation process, before that to occur.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, so I don't have any further comments from my end, is any further comments from the commission, or do I have a motion to, I don't get to say very much, or do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Don't move.
Okay, the meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.
Good job.
Members of the public, been adjourned.
Good work, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, great job.